Alrighty, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Chambers. If everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dale, as our new Police Chief, why don't you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Evening Chief.
Good evening.
Thirteen months, three weeks, seven hours.
Thirteen months, twenty-six days, five hours, four minutes. But who's counting?
You know, I'm gonna ask you that every night for the next two years.
Yep. You can text my wife, she can answer it quicker. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're reminded of our ability and freedoms to meet in these type of forms, Lord. We pray tonight especially for our newly elected officials and pray for their families and for them and bring them good wisdom and health and safety. Lord, I have a special prayer request for a young girl undergoing cancer surgery as we speak, that you would guide those surgeons' hands and produce a positive outcome for this family. And Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed on this community. We pray this in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Chief. Alrighty, so we're up to the Oaths of Office. Nope, we're up to Approval of the Minutes. I just need a motion to approve the minutes for November 6th and November 20th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve, both of us presented.
Second?
Motion second, any discussion?
No sir.
Hearing none, call the vote, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Alright, now we're up to the Oaths of Office and then we'll take a brief recess after them. Deputy Mayor, would you like to go first?
Yes sir.
You want to go down?
Why don't, hm? Yeah, why don't we all kinda go down? Deputy Mayor Hank, are you prepared to take your oath of office?
I am ready, yes sir.
Repeat after me. I state your name and solemnly swear...
I state Hank and solemnly swear...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
The constitutions and governments...
The constitutions and governments...
Of the United States, the State of Florida, and the City of Oviedo...
The United States, the State of Florida, and the City of Oviedo...
Against all enemies domestic in form...
Against all enemies domestic in form...
And that I will bear...
And that I will bear...
True faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same.
That I am entitled to hold the office of councilmember...
That I am entitled to hold the office of councilmember...
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties...
And that I will faithfully perform the duties...
Of the office of councilmember of the City of Oviedo...
The office of councilmember of the City of Oviedo...
On which I'm about to enter...
On which I'm about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Thank you sir. Mr. Mayor, you can start to take your oath of office, sir. I state your name and solemnly swear that I am the City of Oviedo, it is not long ago, that I will support, protect, and defend the constitutions and governments of the United States, the State of Florida, and the City of Oviedo, the United States, the State of Florida, and the City of Oviedo, against all enemies domestic in form, against all enemies domestic in form, and that I will bear, that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same. True faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same. That I am entitled to hold the office of mayor, that I am entitled to hold the office of mayor, under the Constitution, under the Constitution, that I will faithfully perform the duties, that I will faithfully perform the duties, of the office of mayor of the City of Oviedo, of the office of mayor of the City of Oviedo, on which I'm about to enter. So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Hank.
Vivek, you good? Alrighty, everyone, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. It is approximately 6:45. I did not announce earlier that we do have all members of council present this evening. Next order of business is electing of our Presiding Officer and Deputy Mayor. We have, we will start with the Presiding Officer, I'll take nominations.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to propose Bob Pollak as our Chairman.
I respectfully decline that, thank you.
Would you at least consider, or at least let me explain the rationale behind it?
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to nominate yourself as the Presiding Officer. Thank you. Alrighty. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call the vote in the order they were given. Bob, well Bob, you removed yourself?
Yes.
Myself as Presiding Officer.
Aye.
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 Four votes. Well guys, I do appreciate it, thank you very much. It is a pleasure to sit in the middle and keep everything running along. Moving on to the Deputy Mayor, I'll take nominations for Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I would like to nominate Councilman Britton to be the Deputy Mayor this year.
I'm sick of that.
Any other nominations for Deputy? Hearing none, by default I will close, but I will call the vote, all in favor, Keith, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's see, it's December, so by September I'll get it right.
Okay.
I'll just keep calling him Deputy Mayor all year long. Yes, Councilman?
Just wanted to explain my nomination for, for the different Chairman. My thought was that you're often on the hot seat and have been doing this for seven years and it might be fun to rotate, so I was reading the Charter today, seeing if we could rotate every meeting, and turns out we can't do that, so anyway, I was trying to introduce an opportunity for you not to have to be always the one in charge, though I think you do it beautifully, so I'm glad you're here again.
Well, thank you, I do appreciate that. It's almost second nature sometimes, sitting in the center, but thanks for thinking of me, I appreciate it. Moving on, we have our ceremonial items now. Florida Fish and Wildlife Presentation on the Bear Population. Patrick, you want to do a brief introduction for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following a request earlier in the year from council, I reached out to Florida Fish and Wildlife to brief us on several bear sightings that have been happening in the area, and there's been a lot of activity in the county and a lot of action by other governments in the county, and I thought we might see it useful to hear from the state bear biologist, Mr. Mike Orlando. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike, come on up. How are you tonight?
Great, thank you. Again, I'm Mike Orlando, I'm the Assistant Bear Program Coordinator for Florida Fish and Wildlife. I actually cover the entire state, so I, but I live in Deland. The reason I live in Deland is because we have our largest black bear population in the entire state, is the Ocala National Forest, and the surrounding areas. We have over 1,200 bears in the Ocala National Forest, and as you know, the Orlando area and surrounding areas has a lot of people as well. So I have a quick PowerPoint presentation. I'm extremely excited that you guys asked us to come, because what we are seeing throughout the state is areas on the periphery of our big population like Ocala and Appalachia Cola, is it takes some time, but the bear populations are expanding, and they're certainly expanding into Oviedo and, you know, the east side of Seminole County for sure. So, I just, do I have a clicker? How do I do that? Oh, okay, sorry.
Linda will do it for you.
Thank you, very much, sorry. So, I'm gonna quickly go over some basic bear information throughout the state, but bring it back down to Oviedo here in a minute. We think we have around 4,050 bears statewide. The Central BMU, or Bear Management Unit, is our largest bear management unit, as I was just saying, and it's increasing every single year. And that increase from the Ocala National Forest is really an expansion outwards from the forest. So we're not getting too many more bears in the forest itself, they're kind of spreading out over time. If you look at the map here, you can see the dark brown areas are most abundant area. Clearly, Oviedo and certainly parts, most of Seminole County is in either the brown or the common area, meaning that we have many bears, but we don't have a whole lot of breeding going on. The brown part is females with cubs we see all the time. Next slide. So, this is what we call the Leaning J, and the Leaning J is just basically a little scientific graph. You can replace bears with other things like Goliath grouper, bald eagles, panthers, you name it, anything that's been on the recovery over some time, and we're now experiencing a different phase of management. So, prehistoric, they were very abundant throughout the state, they started to be over-exploited and became rare. Our agency, the state agency, was created, we started putting rules and regulations on hunting and trapping and that sort of thing, they start to rebound, and as we're going up into the conflict management part, the green area, that's really where we are now. So we have 20-plus million people in the state, 5 million visitors a day, and our bear population is also expanding at almost the exact same percentage rate. So we are bound to have conflicts. Most of those conflicts come in the form of some sort of food attractant, most likely garbage. So if you look at the chart, what our conflicts break down to, general interactions mean, hey, I saw a bear on my street, or there was a bear up a tree, that's actually easily fixable, we can go and do some education and outreach. In garbage is our second largest part of our conflicts, and that really can actually be fixed through mechanical means, and people doing some simple lifestyle changes like keeping your garbage in your garage until the morning of pickup. Makes sense? If you look at Oviedo, you can see that you're starting to get bears really coming from two different directions. You're starting to get them from west of I-4, they're crossing over I-4, and they're coming from the Waukaia Basin area, and you're starting to get them come from the east. So, the whole...
If I could pause you for a second?
Sorry, yes, yes.
They're, they're coming, is there a tunnel under I-4?
They find ways...
Or they go, they just...
We've, we've actually had them cross straight through, at the Amway Center, they walk right by the Amway Center and continue on going, yeah, absolutely.
So they're, they're just that used to people at this point?
Some of them are just dispersing. So they're young males that have been kicked out of the home, you know, with mom, they were with mom for a year, year and a half, they've been kicked out of that family unit, and now they're just trying to figure out where they're supposed to be, and that way seems good, and they ended up, you know, we get at least two bears a year in downtown Orlando, and they're, and they're basically moving this direction, so...
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, I'm sure you'll get to it, but having seen this a few times...
Yeah.
The bears, the cubs stay with the mom...
Yes.
Mom kicks them out...
Yes, about a year and a half.
And now those cubs have to go find their own territory...
Exactly right.
Which could be up to 100 miles that they walk, right?
Easily, we've actually had bears wearing radio collars that have dispersed one-way directions 100 miles, absolutely. So, it's a, they, they're very secure with mom for about a year, year and a half, and then when they're kicked out of that family unit, they have to figure out what to do, you know.
Right, and they find their own territory.
Exactly right.
And then the next cycle happens and they find their...
And that's how the expansion occurs. And so, you know, now we have young males and females slowly moving outwards, getting away from the more dense populations, so...
Thank you.
And you have it happening from both directions, lucky you guys, so, but we have bears on either side of you, above you, below you, they're, they're all around. In fact, we've had them on the UCF campus, most recently, you guys probably seen in the news, so... So we've actually been very responsive within the city and surrounding areas, we've done quite a bit of outreach in some of the communities, we've done a lot of canvassing, and canvassing is basically, we have a couple of folks go to door-to-door in neighborhoods where bear attractants are present or bear issues have been taking place, and we're just alerting everybody to the fact. And in fact, we have these handouts that I can hand you guys, we leave them on doors and so on and so forth, so, makes sense. We've also done quite a bit of site visits, we've had them near the high school and elementary schools, and so we're going there and talking to these folks about what they can do to keep bears away from the students and their communities. We actually did capture a bear, most notably at the Dunkin' Donuts, and...
There were pictures of that bear in the dumpster, having a good time.
Yes, we did capture that bear and we relocated it. Just, just so everybody knows, we do use donuts as the bait to catch bears, so this was sort of a no-brainer, yeah.
Do you really do that?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we get day-old donuts donated to us from Publix and other rand, you know, Dunkin' Donuts in fact, and, and yeah, there, it doesn't attract ants and flies and all that, and it's high calories, high fat, so, yeah, so, yeah. And we do sign a waiver that says we won't eat them between when they're donated and they're in the trap, so... So one of the easiest things that we could do to keep bears out of garbage and reduce our conflicts is, is just making our garbage more secure. In this example here, you can see the bear peeling back the plastic lid with its teeth, it's difficult by the way, if you've ever tried that, and, and we actually just use metal lids and metal sliding doors. Next slide. So you can see there's a little carabiner, as long as the metal lid and the carabiner are locked, the bears really can't get into them at all, we haven't had any breached, and that just does the trick. Next slide. We've also gone to a new method, it's a plastic lid that's reinforced with locking bars, and the, the county has actually, through our grants, actually outfitted all their utilities, boat ramps, everything, fire departments, all with this particular method, so it's very effective. Next slide. One of the things, this is actually a little bit of a video of, these are the bears at the Central Florida Zoo. There are actually, two of those cans up there, they're testing a can that is fully automated. So up until the last couple of years, we only had semi-automated cans, meaning a person has to unlock the lid with their, their finger, lift it open, put the garbage, or dump the garbage. This can actually, there's two companies now that we actually helped test with these bears and wild bears, where the arm, the automated truck comes, grabs the can, tips it upside down, and puts it back down, and it's fully bear resistant, so, and they've been tested out west and using our, some of our Florida bears, so it's kind of exciting to see that in action. Next slide. So, sorry, next one, two. So the Seminole County ordinance that went into effect a couple of years ago was mostly everything west of I-4, and you can see why, those red dots indicate bear conflicts, and we actually had three fairly serious attacks by bears on people in that area. So they took the initiative to create an ordinance zone, the ordinance basically states you have to keep your garbage and any attractants away from bears if you live in a bear area, in this, in this zone. You could do that by putting garbage in your garage, building a caddy or a shed on the side of your house, or buying a bear resistant garbage cans, there's no mandate for any, any one of those things. So, next slide. This is the zone, we actually have that yellow area, it's the watch area. I personally lobbied to have the entire county in the watch area, but the county council decided not to do that, but, you know, I'm an overachiever, I think, so, but I really do think that at some point in time, the City of Oviedo, starting now, thinking about this in maybe two years or so, you may want to consider doing something like this or offering these bear resistant garbage cans, because I really do think it's only a matter of time before the bears really start to become a problem for you. Next slide. And that's, that's my deal.
Well, thank you. Mike, anybody have any questions?
Do you want me to hand these out?
Mike, I think the, the whole PowerPoints up on your website, even with some of the videos in it, if I remember, right?
We do have a couple of PowerPoints that are up there, yeah, and there's some really pretty funny videos, we kept it short for this go-around, but...
Well, we do appreciate it. The one with the, the bear knocking on all the back doors is, is a fun one.
Yeah, and there's a couple of them that actually were in, taken in Seminole County, where there's a bear resistant, sorry, there's a bear resistant garbage can on one side of the street, the bear walks over to it, sniffs it, walks straight by it into an unsecured garbage bag, like just a bag, grabs it, and then unfortunately goes back into the guy's yard who has the bear resistant garbage can and eats it in his yard, which is, which is really unfair in the long run, but it really does prove the point that these, these things work.
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
I think you addressed it early on, if I missed it, I apologize.
Second.
But when they're traveling from the west side over here, I mean, are they trying to do it through foresty areas? I mean, are they walking, are they, are they walking down, are they walking down I-4? I mean, are they in the streets doing it, are they doing it at night? I mean, what's the mode, what's their favorite mode of travel?
Right. So, they're going to, they're going to take the path of least resistance, and they're really only going to be crossing I-4 quickly and in one direction, they're not going to spend any time on the, on the road.
Right.
We do have bears hit by cars and killed going from west to east, and so we know that it's actually happening, and most recently, we actually have documented a bear up by the zoo, come down past the airport, and then continue to head this direction. So, they can travel, a male bear has a 60-square-mile home range, so, and a female has around 25 square miles, and so they can do lots of movements. And, you know, there's a lot of, I-4 in reality is pretty pervious, they'll, they'll find their ways at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning to figure out how to cross it.
Got you, thank you. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
I only had one bear encounter, and he absolutely just ignored me and my wife while we were in the park.
Sure.
Like we weren't even there. Are they afraid of people, for the most part?
Yeah, it's a really good question, and, and so there's a, there's a sliding scale of bear behavior. Wild bears really don't want anything to do with people, most times, they see you, they run. As they start getting food from garbage, bird seed, dog food, they'll start to slowly lose that fear over time. And so what you could be experiencing is a bear who has eaten out of somebody's garbage, they, you know, scared him two months ago, then he just eventually loses that fear because the food is more important than somebody yelling at him, so...
What's a good way to scare him away? Would a firecracker scare him, or just...
Sure, actually, actually, you're legally allowed to shoot them with paintball guns now, and so, in your yard, we don't want you roaming around the streets popping off paintballs, but, you know, state, and I'm assuming...
You know, it's very good that you clarify that, Dan.
There, there may see, may be some laws within the city as well, figure that out first, but as far as the state's concerned...
So you got any paintball guns? No, no, okay, never mind.
And that's actually a very good point, that we, I also give a training, it's a four-hour training for law enforcement to use less lethal beanbag rounds, paintball guns, and scare deterrents, and if you guys are interested, I'd be happy to put on a training for you all, that'd be, that'd be good.
And if they're in a tree, just leave them there?
Yeah, the best, best management...
I got a lot of trees, I just, if I saw one, I would just walk away and let them sleep in.
Best management for a bear up a tree is just to leave it up a tree, it's actually their safety net, they're avoiding people by being up a tree, and so that's our best management objective there, so...
Alright, got you.
Yeah, no problem. Do you want me to hand these out?
Mike, thank you so much, and you had mentioned that, you know, it may be something the City of Oviedo, because of our proximity, should be preparing for over the next couple of years. Could you possibly keep in touch with Patrick Kelly, our Assistant City Manager, so city staff may be able to start preparing for this, because I know there are grants and different things.
Absolutely.
Perhaps we can partner up with the county, who knows?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fantastic, I could definitely do that.
Oh, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time tonight.
No problem.
Alright, have a great evening.
You know, when we were kids up in Michigan, we used to drive to the dump just to watch the bears eat the trash. Now, now we're keeping away from it.
Had one in my backyard, got my bird feeders, so, they're, they're down and gone now, so... Alrighty, so moving along, next order of business, I believe that was the end of ceremonial. Mr. Cobb, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Uh, no Mayor.
Okay. Moving along, we're up to item number five, which is citizen comment. I have one written request tonight, and that one comes from Joe Lycam. Mr. Lycam, you just have to name and address for the record, and then...
Joe Lycam, 818 Orangewood Drive, Oviedo, Florida.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm addressing the council today. I was reviewing the video from the last commission meeting... I was reviewing the video from the last commission meeting. And toward the end, there was a discussion amongst the council about moving the public comment time to the end of the meeting. And I'm here against that proposal because, as you can see, this is a time certain. If you look at the calendar, you can see that it's early in the meeting. It also gives an opportunity for the council to hear public comments on things that might be decided later in the meeting. There was also discussion about formulating some mechanism to cut people short before the end of their allotted minutes. And I think that's a bad idea because it will stifle people's First Amendment rights when they want to speak before the council. So I'm just saying, let's keep it where it is and the plans, plan not to change any of the public comment procedures. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. That was the only written request I have. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I am going to close the public comment portion, move on to the consent agenda. Those are items six through nine. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pollock.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Pollock, you have the floor.
That's good.
Councilman Hankins?
There you go. He got it, first name. No, everything looks good. Thank you, sir.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman?
I think item number six merits some additional discussion. And there's a whole little packet that pertains to that, if we could address that separately.
What would you like to do with it? Just pull it off and we'll make it 9A?
If we could do that, that'd be great.
It's up to the second or the motioner.
I'm fine with that.
That's fine. All righty. So we're going to move number six to 9A. All righty, so the amended motion is to approve the consent agenda, items seven through nine, move item six to item 9A. Motioner agree?
I agree.
Seconder agree?
Yes.
All righty, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just give me a moment, let me get 9A up here. Which is actually six. All righty, so this is resolution number 3510-17. Mr. Cobb, could you give us a brief introduction?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve a Florida Department of Environmental Protection grant agreement through the Florida Communities Trust Program. It's for reimbursement of the acquisition of approximately 0.5 acres, which is commonly known as the Owens property, which is located on the north side of County Road 419 and the west side of Reed Road. Back in August, the council granted the staff the opportunity to apply for the grant. The city had purchased the property, the Owens property, a year before, for a cost around $66,000. And council approved the acquisition for cost, for the purchase price plus any cost. The total cost came out to around $68,121.78. During the application process, the FCT required the city to prepare a management plan for the property to convert it to a recreational use. That management plan involved boardwalk connection. It was all based on the relationship to Round Lake Park, extending the boardwalk, establishing a fishing pier, some picnic tables, and some informational kiosks. And the city has three years to implement the management plan. The maximum award is $51,091.34. That would leave the city's match at $17,030.44. Of course, the city's match is the money the city expended to purchase the property. It's recommended that the city adopt, city council adopt resolution number 3510-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Sladeau. She pulled it off.
Much as I would love to be the recipient of a Florida Communities Trust grant, this particular one, if you open it up, it has a lot of limits that would limit not just the parcel that we'd be reimbursed for, which is the corner over on the bottom right of the lake. It's the corner of Reed Road and 419, for those who are in the audience. But it would limit the whole thing. And some of the provisions are not very favorable to the city. An example of something that would be prohibited, the way I read the grant limitations, is we could not have the Boy Scouts go sell hot dogs there. And I can envision a universe in which that may not be an inappropriate thing to allow. So as an alternative proposition, I think it might make sense to revisit something I've brought up before, which is acquiring the three lots that are indicated up on the screen. As proposed to even get this grant, we have to spend an additional $99,000. We've already, we're already out the $68,000 to acquire the Owens property. We're not out the 99. But in discussing with the listing agent of these three parcels, it may be possible to acquire that for somewhere in the range of $50,000, which is half as much as 99. And also keeps, so we would acquire about a half an acre of land, complete the loop around Round Lake Park, and avoid putting some very, very restrictive limitations on a, I think it's one of our best parks. So I'm hoping that you guys will maybe consider finding room in the budget instead of $99,000 to do something that would restrict us to just acquire some land so we have greater potential.
Okay. Anybody else want to take a step?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb, the restrictions that Councilwoman is talking about, is that your understanding as well, that we have some restrictions on how it can be used if we take the grant?
The agreement does place, all Florida Communities Trust grants do place restrictions. However, my understanding is that it would only be on the Owens property. I haven't been able to find anything to say that it would apply to all of Round Lake Park. My understanding is that it just applies to the Owens property that was purchased. But it does. I mean, every, all FCT grants have certain restrictions as far as use and what you can't use it for.
Right. If I could perhaps answer that a little bit more thoroughly. The park management plan addresses boardwalks and things that are going to extend far beyond the Owens property. It applies to any improvement that we include in our management plan. And the management plan, it covers everything.
All right, let me just hear what everybody else has to say and then we'll rely on Mr. Cobb and Mr. Grude for their understanding of what this says. Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Megan, I couldn't quite hear what you were saying about the restrictions. What are the restrictions they would prevent us from doing that you thought we might want to use it for?
We can't outsource concessions in any way. That's one of the limitations.
And that would apply, I guess, I guess the question is whether that would apply on that parcel that we're using the grant for or the whole park? Who would enforce that?
I don't know.
Mr. Cobb?
It would be the DEP.
Maybe they'll set up an office in the city and watch over us.
Anything else?
Being sarcastic.
Councilman Pollock?
The budget money that you're talking about, this isn't going to impact our budget till fiscal year 18, from what I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Cobb?
Ah, yes. Well, we would have three years to implement.
Okay. So, councilmember, what you were looking for was something from this current budget to purchase these properties? Is that correct?
Yes. They're for sale now.
All right. And then the restrictions that were being discussed, I'd like some more clarification on that from Mr. Grude or Mr. Cobb about the, because this is the park that we do our MLK Day celebration at, and I want to make sure that that's not going to have an impact on this park. Them having concessions and other things at the park on that day as well, if it takes up the whole thing or just the section that we're talking about, the Owens property. Other than that, that's all I have.
Mayor, can I ask one quick question? How do we know, are these properties listed? Are they, do we know they're for sale? I mean, are they out there? Are they listed? How do we know they're for sale?
Well, let's get an answer to Councilman Pollock first, if we can follow up on, I mean, Councilman Hankins. If we can answer Councilman Pollock's question.
If you guys are looking for the provisions that would limit, it's page 12 of the grant application. And one of them is that any use of projects sighted by non-governmental person other than such, in such person's capacity as a member of the public is prohibited.
Well, I can answer the for-sale question.
It's for sale, officially, it's listed.
They're pending.
It's not pending anymore. It fell through.
I'm in the MLS right now, it's pending. Okay.
They're signing some stuff that's.
That's fine. I know how things happen.
Yeah.
I'm just, I saw pending on what was printed here, but this was printed a week ago, so I just went in and I checked, it still says pending.
Is this a listing for all three properties?
It is a listing for all three properties, Bob. It's got all three parcel ID numbers on it.
Okay.
I mean, it would be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to deal specifically with the Boy Scouts issue, that, and if that's the only issue, the way that can be done is the city operates the concession using the Boy Scouts efforts and have an agreement with the Boy Scouts. But it's the city operating the concession. So if there's another example.
Another example would be we couldn't rent out the tennis courts to somebody operating like a league or coaching there because it would be renting it in violation of 2A on page 12. So that is lease of an interest in the project site.
Once again, it depends upon how you manage the project. I've been involved in these before and then the enforcement and clearing issues with the DEP is the grantor. And it depends upon how you structure it. If you structure tennis lessons or a tennis league through the city using a pro or using some affiliation, then there's ways to do it. But if you just, I agree with you that if you just lease it or license it to a pro or something like that, then that there's enforcement issues. But if it's the city doing it through these entities, there's not an enforcement issue.
So that sounds like what the intention of the restriction is, is to not take state money and then turn it over to a private entity.
Exactly, exactly.
Because we have these grants all over the city. I mean, we've used these dozens of times in my years up here.
The key issue the DEP always has is, is the public having free access and is it benefiting the public? And so there's ways to structure it that that's clear. And, you know, typically you don't think of the Boy Scouts as a profit-making entity. So if you can structure it in a way that it's really the city working in conjunction with a nonprofit historically praised organization, then you could do it.
Could we rent out a pavilion to somebody holding a birthday party under your reading of page 12? Because I look at that and I think we can't even do that.
I would think you could if it was.
Well, then we wouldn't be able to do it at Friendship Park. We're taking these grants.
Yeah, and I don't know the impact.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb.
I think from, at least my reading of 2A is if we were to take a section of the park, lease it to a non-governmental entity for their exclusive use of the park. That would be my reading of 2A to say, no, you cannot do that.
I think the sum and substance of the prohibition is indeed. Any use of the project sighted by a non-governmental person other than in such person's capacity as a member of the public. So as long as it's, the capacity is a member of the public, whether it's a wedding or birthday party or you name it, then you're okay. Once again, DEP's looking for a public benefit. That's the whole concept behind these grants.
All right, so it sounds like that question's been answered. The other question that the council member had was, instead of using the dollars for the grant, we use the dollars to purchase land. Now, you know, I'm in agreement that you purchase land for your park system when it's available. I mean, that's why we purchased the other parcel, the Owens parcel, because it was available. So, Mr. Cobb, is there, if the amount of money is in the range that the council member is stating, which we don't know yet, but let's just assume, is there a way that we might be able to make both happen?
I would have to consult with Mr. Booth, but there's possibility, I'm sure there's a possibility to do that. But like I said, I would have to consult with him to make sure that it was the funds available.
Is the grant time-sensitive or can that be continued to, are meeting in January?
No, we need to, there's a requirement that we get to respond back to them by the eighth of this month.
Now, Councilmember Pollock brought up a point that this wouldn't be funds until 2018. So is that 2018, 2019, or 2017, 2018 that we're in now?
I believe that, well, the first time that we program funding would be 2018, 19 for the management plan, if that's what you're asking.
All right, so we would have to put monies for this grant in next year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Not this year's budget? So this year's budget, we may or may not be able to find the dollars to purchase the additional land.
Correct.
And if for some reason we accepted the grant and in next year's budget we were unable to find the dollars, we just lose the grant, correct?
Well, we've got three years. We would have three years to implement.
Oh, so we have plenty of time.
So, I mean, that's the thing, we do have the three years. Now, you've got to remember that the state fiscal year runs differently from ours.
Right, because they run July to June 30 to July 1st.
Yeah.
So this would be considered year one for them.
It could possibly be considered.
So July 1st, 2018 is one year, 19, 20. So we have until '20, which is actually 19, 20 for us.
Right. And the agreement does give you the opportunity to extend the deadlines if you can demonstrate in good faith, that you're proceeding in good faith.
And this is a matching grant, so.
Yes, sir.
We spend.
We've already met match, we've already met the match with the purchase of the property.
I see. How much are we getting from them?
We would receive $51,000. It's a little over $51,000 that we would receive from the state.
So we'd spend 99 to receive 51. We'd spend, no, 168 to receive 51.
Yes, sir.
All right, because we already spent the money, the 68 for the land, 100 for the.
For the management plan.
For the management plan, so it's 168, we get 51. That's still not a darn bad return on taxpayers' money. But the bigger question is, you know, council member is correct. I mean, when land's available, land's available. And just like what we did with the Owens property when the land was available before they sold it to some commercial entity. I mean, you know, myself personally, I'd really like to see you get together with the finance staff and see if there's something that we might be able to do since the grant money. I mean, that could go out to 2019, 2020 for us. I mean, that's two and a half years. All right, anybody else? I'm sorry, I dominated there for a second. Just got on a roll.
What are you trying to do with tables?
Well.
Anyone need to vote on the grant tonight?
Well, I think we should, well, the question on the table is the grant, and then the second question would be the land. So, since we have this item called up for the grant, is there any other discussion on that? And then I'll jump into a brief discussion on the land once we're done with this. Councilmember?
Got a question on this. Are we getting $51,000 back or are we getting $17,000 back?
We would get $51,000 back. The $51,000 is 75% of the 68, which was the total cost of the purchase. And then our match would be 75, would be the 17.
And we're allowed to spread our match off-site of where it's applied, but then the rules would apply to any place we were to do it? It sounds like the rules, we can work around them. And the only consequence of accepting 50 grand from the state, is it simply to return the money at the end of three years if we don't make good on the plan?
We would basically, it's a reimbursement.
Okay, so do we get penalized for that, or we just give back what we got?
We would just not, we would not get the $51,000.
Oh, so we don't get the 51 until we spend...
No, I think we've already spent the money to get the $51,000.
Okay, so we would get that immediately?
Yeah.
And...
If we didn't do the management plan, we would basically give the state money back.
Okay, because I'm looking at the management plan thinking, well, this is a lot of stuff, but would we use it all? Is it worth spending 50 to get another 50 back? In a way, it's kind of a good thing because we spend 169 and we get 51, but we still have to spend another $99,000.
Over three years.
Over three years.
That's the way it was granted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend Resolution 3510-17.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call to vote, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 3510-17, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Second point of discussion, and we might as well do it while we're here, is we have land that could possibly be purchased for a similar price or probably less, I would think, than the Owens property, because the Owens property had a commercial zoning on it, and it's a little bit smaller, is there consensus of the council for staff to pursue if we can find the money in the budget?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to let Mr. Cobb talk with Mr. Boop and see where, if they can find it. I don't, you know, given the state of our budget, this fiscal year, it's so tight, you know, I mean, I would love to own this property, but if they can't find the money or it's not going to work, then I, you know, we may have to pass this out.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. So your notes say that this property, these properties are pending, my question still was not answered, how do we know they're not pending? That's what I want to know before we pursue it.
Because I know the listing agent, he told me.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to hear, so you heard.
Yes.
All right, well, all I'm looking for is consensus to let staff look into it, that's a better answer than you are the listing agent.
I am not the listing agent. But then there's the question of how would this be rigged if, to get maximum public benefit if the city were to proceed? And I do have a way to navigate that, and that would be to have either the mayor or I negotiate the deal and donate 100% of the proceeds to a charity that would erect a historic marker at the site.
Well, can I just say this? That's all well and good, right now, I'm going to go on that I have two properties that are listed as pending. When they come back online, and we'll do it the right way, this I heard, or this, I'm not working on that type of stuff, you know? That's not how I do things. When they come back on, let's do it the right way. This is precisely the reason why people get aggravated and...
Well, no, evidently, they only get aggravated at me.
Should we call right now and find out if it's active? I mean, since somebody's got a computer, we can see if it's active.
You know what, when you see a property listed online and it says pending, you go to the next one, and I'm not even going there, I don't even like the way this is.
Well, Mr. Mayor? Guys, 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 guys.
Mayor?
For a second, everybody.
If I could, how about we do this, let Mr. Boop and I first?
Yeah.
And then also, if we do, we can report it back, and then if you wish, if you'll give us direction, and I will pursue negotiation on the second.
Let Mr. Groot contact the listing agent, and we have to get an appraisal, I mean, there's many steps before we can purchase land, it's...
We can bring your report back at the next meeting for what we found out.
Is there consensus for that? Let the city attorney handle it.
That's fine.
Bob, you're okay with that?
I'm okay, I just want to see if you come back with the price where we're cutting the budget at.
That's all right.
Okay.
We will, we'll bring that, we'll bring everything back to you.
Well, my consensus is not there, just that somebody heard, when they come back on and everybody has an opportunity to buy this land, then we can look at it, not because we got some, this is ridiculous.
Well...
Whatever.
It would be three nice pieces that would finish off the park, so let's see if something can come up with it. I think you have four to one consensus, it sounded like, Mr. Cobb, to look into it, sit with Mr. Boop, report back where the money would come out of the budget in order to make the purchase. You know, unfortunately with land, it's just like with the Owens property, you know, last year, when these opportunities show up, you know, it's an opportunity that shows up, so let's see what we can make happen with it. As far as myself or yourself being involved in it, I really think we should just stay away from that, no matter what your intentions were for the proceeds, that, well, let Mr. Groot take care of it, okay? Want to facilitate the conversation, knock yourself out.
All right, appreciate that.
All right, so we've got consensus on that, and 9A is done. So now we're going to move on to our first public hearing, that's ordinance number 1661, which is an amendment to the future land use map of the cities of Oviedo's 2025 Comprehensive Plan for Oviedo Point Properties. Let me just catch up to this item here, and I believe, Mr. Groot, you need to read that by title only for me.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of City of Oviedo, Florida, amending ordinance number 896, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the City of Oviedo Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use of approximately 17.65 acres located on the south side of Mitchell Hammock Road, east of State Road 426, from County Industrial, IND, to City Commercial, CM, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for a saving provision, conflict separability, the correction of script reserves, and providing for an effective date, that's the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Groot, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. The properties that are in question are the properties that are located just west of the Wawa, where we, Mission BBQ, Mo's, Thousand Degree Pizza, Dairy Queen, those properties are the properties that are in question tonight. Those properties were annexed into the city in August, on August 7, 2017. The purpose of this amendment is to incorporate these properties into the city's comprehensive plan. One of the things that the applicant and the staff have done is that they have brought about an equivalent city future land use to the county future land use that is reflective of how the property is being used and how it is proposed to be used in the future. In fact, through the staff's analysis, they found that assigning it the city commercial future land use designation actually lowers the intensity of development as opposed to what it could have been in the county. The staff did review it for the, our comprehensive plan policies, they found that it was, the proposed future land use designation was compatible with the surrounding area, they also found that it met the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan, staff recommends approval. The land planning, local planning agency considered this ordinance at its Tuesday, November 28 meeting, they conducted a public hearing, and they also recommend approval of this ordinance. This is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, therefore, this public hearing, you are going to be asked to transmit it to the State Department of Economic Opportunity, and then once it comes back, we'll come back and reconvene and do a second public hearing that will be for the actual adoption of the property. So tonight, we're asking you to conduct a public hearing and transmit ordinance number 1661 to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, I do not see any representative from the applicant here this evening, is there anybody here, Mr. Cobb?
Hi.
I don't see anyone, all right, well, this is just a transmit. All righty, so no applicant comments, and now I'll open up the public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address counsel on ordinance number 1661? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments and move on to entertaining a motion to transmit ordinance number 1661 to the Department of Economic Opportunity.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Bob, you have any questions?
No, it's good.
Councilmember?
Just to clarify, this is a comprehensive plan change only because they came to us, they annexed in with a county comprehensive plan designation, correct? So it's all built out, it's all done, this is not what we would think of as a normal comp plan change because it's already done? So just want to make sure that everybody who may be listening or wondering if we're doing something big is done, and it was done prior to the annexing, so that's it, it looks like it is what it is.
Just cleaning up the map. Deputy Mayor? Either one of you can answer.
I'm good. I thought you were talking to him anyway, it's going to take me a while to get you...
All right, you guys are both okay. All right, I have nothing, councilmember kind of clarified it all, he's just cleaning up the map. All right, so all those in favor of the motion to transmit ordinance 1661 to the Department of Economic Opportunity, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move along to the second part of the same ordinance, this is ordinance number 1662, Mr. Groot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Oviedo, Florida, said amendment changing the zoning district of approximately 18.28 acres located on the south side of Mitchell Hammock Road, east of State Road 426, from County Industrial, M1, and Commercial, C3, to Commercial, to City Commercial, C2, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for a saving provision, conflict separability, the correction of script reserves, and providing for an effective date, that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot, Mr. Cobb, I'm assuming similar action here.
This is a similar action, yes, sir, this, the primary purpose of this zoning map amendment is to incorporate the property that was annexed into the zoning map. The C2 zoning district is a compatible zoning, consistent zoning district with the proposed commercial future land use designation. The staff did review the proposed zoning, and their findings were presented in their supporting inventory and data and analysis, and they found that the proposed zoning not only is compatible and consistent with the proposed future land use designation, but that is also compatible with the surrounding area. They recommend approval, the local planning agency conducted a public hearing on November the 28th and recommended approval. It's recommended tonight that you conduct a public hearing and then schedule a second public hearing for a date to coincide with the adoption hearing of ordinance number 1661.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cobb, the applicant is not here, anybody in the audience want to address counsel on ordinance number 1662? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, and I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule second public hearing and discussion for ordinance number 1662 upon the return of ordinance number 1661, which will be a future date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second, councilmember?
Same, similar comments as before, the county zoning does not perfectly coincide with the city zoning, so this is not really a change of zoning or change of use, it is just cleaning up the map.
Great.
I'm good.
You're good. Former deputy mayor, current deputy mayor, you're good. He might have some shirts. All righty, seeing and hearing, any further comments? No, seeing and hearing none, I'll call the question, the motion on the table is to schedule a second public hearing for ordinance number 1662 upon the return of ordinance number 1661 from the Department of Economic Development Affairs, or whatever it was called. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Yes, it used to be known as DCA, Department of Economic Opportunity.
DEO is way cuter, but doesn't stop anything.
DCA had real teeth.
Yes, they did. It was awesome.
DEO is...
Rubber stamp it.
You said it, not me. All right, first reading of ordinance is we have none, we do have a couple of resolutions, however, the first one is Resolution number 3507-17, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor, this is a request for council to approve a preliminary subdivision plan for the Andrews Crossing subdivision, the subdivision located on the east side of State Route 426, approximately 918 feet south of Mitchell Hammock Road. Subject properties, future land use designations are medium-density residential and commercial. Zoning district is planned unit development, the PUD is governed by the Andrews Crossing Non-Statutory Development Agreement and Conceptual Development Plan that was adopted by council on October 3, 2016. The applicant, through this subdivision plan, this is basically the next step after we've done the conceptual plan, the applicant is not requesting any deviations to the standards listed in the Non-Statutory Development Agreement, and the subdivision basically divides the property into five parcels, there's also five tracks, as well as one right-of-way off of, with access onto State Route 426. The staff recommends approval, the local planning agency also considered Resolution number 3507 at its November 28 meeting, and also recommended approval. It's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution number 3507-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, is the applicant present, or does the applicant have a presentation? Anything to add, George? Name and address, you know the girl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is George Veely, I reside at 301 Carolyn Drive, I'm here this evening representing Adu Dan Sons. With me this evening is our civil engineer, Majid Kalachi, if there are any engineering-related questions also. With us tonight is Aaron Hennes Archie with Adu Dan Sons, so I really don't have too much to add to the city manager's presentation, we're here to answer any questions, we would request your approval. As Ryan had indicated, this is the next step in the process, and we're proceeding with final engineering after this, so we solicit your approval.
And George, just to be clear for the public, because there was some chatter going around, this is for the headquarters site, not the side farm?
That's correct, this is the 42-acre plus or minus headquarters site, it'll be a combination of the new headquarters for Adu Dan Sons that they're looking forward to, there'll be a retail component, some office components, and a townhome component, so that's the project.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant before, excuse me? No? Okay, thank you, George. All right, I have no request to speak forms on this item, so I'll move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3507-17.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Councilmember Pollock, you have the floor.
It looked good to me, especially being that there were no deviations, that was really nice, so I'm good.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Henkin? Councilmember Sladek?
I love the lack of deviations, but in doing the math on the wetlands, I did want to maybe ask publicly so we can get an official explanation of how the numbers are just a little bit off, and I've actually already heard this from the staff level, and it is okay, but if anybody out there has read the packet and is wondering where the wetlands went, and if anything shady is going on, I just want to make sure that we're on the record, and perhaps Dr. Kaya could add up everything and assure us that all wetlands that are there are in fact still being protected and have been all along.
So, good evening, Councilman Sladek called us in the afternoon today to say that there was a small inconsistency between the numbers that we were in our report and then the numbers in the plans for the wetlands. The plans are correct, so there was a mistake in the memo report that actually we copied from the PUD memo, so the mistake actually was adding the numbers in 2016 when we did the report for the PUD, but the plans are correct, I checked, and I can show you that there was 0.4 acres that were counted twice, when they were adding the numbers for the total wetland, it was just a mistake in the memo. The correct number should be...
Point four?
So we are not missing .4 acres of wetlands. They've been there all along.
Would anybody miss .4 acres of wetlands?
Yes!
Okay.
So our report says 20.10 acres, and the correct number should be 19.7.
The engineer had it right?
Yes.
It's two houses worth of wetlands that could have been gone, and they're not gone, they're there, so I think that's important for our community to know that there, nothing's gone.
The plans that were approved were correct, and the plans that were submitted are consistent with the CDP.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? I'd like to say I think it's also important for our community to know that we have a very competent staff, and I'm sure that they wouldn't make mistakes like that. Anyway, I'm going to call the question, all in favor of the motion on the table to adopt Resolution number 3507-17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to Resolution number 3518-17, Site Development Order number 484-17, this is the architectural design order for the Autism Center. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a request for council to approve a site development order and a architectural design order for the Autism Center, actually, this is an expansion of the Autism Center, the Autism Center actually is already in existence on Lot 6 and 7 of the Oviedo Executive Subdivision. This is an expansion of the Autism Center into Lot 8 of the subdivision. Now, the property is located on the south side of Executive Drive, approximately 500 feet east or south of Clark Street. The total land area of the parcel is 0.4 acres, the property is designated commercial on the future land use map and C2 on the city's future zoning, official zoning map. The applicant, as I mentioned before, the applicant, the property, the Autism Center already exists on Lots 6 and 7, this is an expansion into Lot 8. The applicant does, he proposes to construct a 3,500-square-foot office facility on Lot 8, which is the last remaining lot in the subdivision. Site will have access from Executive Drive, and the proposed buildings are similar to the existing... the existing buildings. There'll be a parking agreement between Lots 6, 7, and 8 for a total of 41 parking spaces. The applicant has asked for some deviations to the land development code, one-site deviation dealing with a number of parking spaces and location of parking spaces. There are also some facade deviations to the secondary facades on the building. The staff has reviewed the plans and recommends approval with three conditions. One, that the applicant pay $900 into the city's tree fund to mitigate six replacement trees. And the applicant, number two, the applicant shall install a six-foot PVC vinyl fence in lieu of construction of a brick or stone decorative masonry wall. Part of the land development code, our code, minimum code requirement is that brick or stone, but it does allow, through the approval of a site development order, that an alternative fence can be allowed. The applicant has proposed a six-foot-high PVC fence along, I believe it's the south boundary. And then that a shared parking agreement with Lots 6 and 7 and 8 be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 3518-17 with the conditions recommended by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no written request to speak. Is the applicant present? Anything to add to this, gentlemen?
My name is Tim Schutz. I'm the civil engineer and I don't have anything to add, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great.
Yeah, I'm Bob Tucker and I'm responsible for the architectural design and we're open for any questions and we'll try to answer them.
There were conditions that the city manager mentioned. I'm assuming those are all agreed upon?
Yes.
Just in the microphone, please, Bob. If you can just state it in the microphone that those are agreed upon.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicants, architects, or representatives?
No. I have a question. Sorry, go ahead. Why the... I can understand the windows and the issues with those from a standpoint of functionally inside the building. And I know that the brick and the design would match the other existing buildings, but we've come up with new architectural standards since then and one of them is to minimize the amount of stucco on the building. Was there not a way to try to meet our new standards and still have a similar flow between the buildings?
We looked at it hard and we think that we're putting a lot of brick on this building. More bricks on this building than on the other two. And we don't want to go too far with it so it won't be consistent with what's there. Surely, we could add more brick down the side and get rid of the stucco, but we just feel like since the distance between the buildings is only about six feet, it's not seen by anyone, and we just feel like that the brick, and I've had discussion with the owner, that we've added brick along, as you see on the pictures, to try to meet as close as we can to what y'all are asking for.
Right. Yeah, the issue that we have is we start making exceptions like this and then other applicants start wanting similar exceptions.
I can understand that. You know, this is an old office park and we trying to stay consistent with what's there. We don't want something that's going to kind of just... In these buildings, you know, this one is kind of a little bit more architecturally inviting than the other two to try to get as close as we can to what you want. But we feel and hope that you feel that the brick that we put on it is acceptable and it's all going to blend in and look good. And this is what we're after, to make it look good for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
On the perimeter wall, what is on the other two existing buildings?
Excuse me, I'm sorry?
For the perimeter wall, what is the material used for the existing two buildings flanking it?
On the secondary facade?
Now, on the buildings that you're matching, is it PVC all the way across, or is there nothing? Like, what's behind the other two? Because we're making an exception going from a masonry wall to PVC potentially, and I'm just wondering what's it connecting to, if anything?
There's a wood fence out there right now.
Okay, so the other two have wood fence, six-foot privacy, so this would be a PVC vinyl fence, so it would be kind of in keeping, but a little bit upgraded. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Anything else? All right. We have any other questions, we'll call you back.
All right.
Thank you, guys. All righty. As I said earlier, I have no request to speak form, so I'll move on to the pleasure of counsel on resolution 3518-17. Mr. Mayor? Counselman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 3518-17.
Second.
Motion second. Counselman, you have the floor.
No, I think it's going to, you know, look fine and it's good service to the city. Awesome.
Deputy mayor?
I looked at the renderings of the... I assume the brick, the primary brick is on the front of the building and I think that looks really good. I'm not really concerned about the rear or the sides that no one's going to be really looking at. The fact that they're so close together, I don't think anyone's really going to be walking through there, so I think it does meet the intent of our code. Doctor, would you agree with that?
Dr. Kriya? Thank you.
And that's exactly my point that I would like to stress. They are exceeding 20% in the primary facade. So, you know, I'd rather have the visible facade being upgraded than the side facades that won't be very visible, not meeting the requirement. I think it meets the intent of the codes, especially to have the consistency with the other buildings. I think there it's absolutely okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm good.
Great. Counsel member? Sladek?
The thing I love about our new architectural standards is that there is flexibility as long as you do the mitigating techniques. And these guys have stepped up to do that and have asked to do some reasonable stuff, so I can get behind this.
Great. Counselman Pollock, anything else to add?
No. I think you were just happy that they added one more bicycle spot on there.
That is nice. I wish they were all covered, though. People need to have them covered and near the front door.
All right. All they needed was a charging station and you'd be happy.
Yes. Charging station.
That's all I had.
All righty. Well, Dr. Kriya answered all the questions that I would have, so I think we're in pretty good shape. Resolution, the motion on the table is to adopt resolution number 3518-17. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. That's the end of our business. Now we're on to our discussion items, and the first one is our annual appointments to board. So let's start off on the easy one, which is the police pension board. There is one term expiring and one person asking to be reappointed. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Damon Passco to the Oviedo Police Pension Board.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was the easy one. All right, so now we're going to move on to our LPA board. We evidently have two members not seeking reappointment and we have, I believe, four applications. We have 1, 2, 3, and there was one on the desk for us. We have four applications. So let's go through them one at a time. I'll take nominations on the first seat.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Curtis Gashlin.
Second.
I'm just taking nominations.
Oh, nominations.
I don't need seconds yet.
Curtis Gashlin.
Are there any other nominations for the first seat? Seeing and hearing none, I will just call the vote then on Curtis Gashlin. All in favor of Curtis Gashlin, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was a very good choice, by the way. Engineer by trade, and I believe he was on code enforcement at one time before. All righty. For our second seat, we have three applicants left and I will accept nominations. Mr. Mayor? Counselman Pollock?
I'd like to nominate Kristen Swetland.
Kristen Swetland. Got it. Any other nominations for the second seat?
I'd like to nominate Lisa Ramsey.
That being said, I'll close nominations. We'll take them in the order that they were nominated upon. First person to get three votes is on the LPA. I'll call the question first on Kristen Swetland. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that 1, 2, 3? That was all of us?
I think so.
Might as well make it aye.
Okay. Kristen Swetland is on the LPA. All righty. That went pretty well. And we would be remiss if we did not thank Bill Sheridan and Matt Young. Bill Sheridan, for many years of service, I think from what I was hearing in the background was he may have had a conflict because his... Some may know and some may not know, his son is one of the star pitchers on the UCF baseball team who won the conference championship last year, and I think there might have been some conflicts coming up in his schedule. And Matt Young has served the board very well for the last four years? Two? Yeah, Bill was at least six or seven, right? Eight? Bill was a long time. And Matt Young served the board extremely well and I would just wish him well and thank him for his service.
He used to sit in this seat, I heard, and always come and it's like way up high, so I have to make it my size again.
From Matt Young?
From Matt.
Matt's like 6'5".
I know. Well, he makes it high because his legs.
Oh, because of his legs.
And I've got stool and this cushion going on and everything.
That makes sense. All righty, so I don't need this, I don't need this. Let's move on. Board appointments are done. Number 16 is a discussion item on federal lobbyist Alcady and Fay. Mr. Cobb, you want to do a brief introduction for us?
Yes, Mayor. On October 2nd, you direct, the council directed staff to contact Alcady and Fay regarding a possible scope of work to assist the city with federal issues, namely dealing with FEMA and Hurricane Irma. They have provided us with a scope of work that was provided in your packet. They are proposing a monthly fee of $5,000 plus actual costs. And tonight, we were just seeking your direction as to what you would like us to do as far as the scope is considered.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Who would like to start?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As I, well, I guess Deputy Mayor and yourself and I, we've had some really good experience with our federal advocate, Alcady and Fay. These guys are super experienced and we had them for a number of years, but during the tough budget years, I mean, we had to eliminate everything that wasn't essential to run the city, but, you know, directly or indirectly, when we had them advocating up in the federal government, which is not easy to do, we were able to get quite a bit of money back to the city. And this came to us during the hurricane. We had an email from them, even with them not being on our retainer now, offering to help us with some FEMA reimbursements and things like that. And, you know, we used a lot of our city staff, so kind of got an idea that, you know, I think, you know, how hard it is to navigate up there, cities are getting money, and if you're not in it, you're not going to have a chance to get anything. And my experience with Skip and Jim at this firm have been, you know, amazing. They really work hard for the city and I think, you know, having the state and now the federal one back, I think they will bring home some money for the city as they have in the past. So I think we're able to afford it and I think it'll certainly, they'll bring back a lot more than it will cost us and we don't have to worry about navigating that maze in Washington. Leave it to the professionals up there. So I'm in favor of having them come back on board and see how they do for us.
Who would like to go next?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have many thoughts. I just don't think the federal government is that corrupt that they will not give us our FEMA reimbursement unless we pay somebody else to ask for it for us. We've got an outstanding staff. They have been, you know, creating Excel spreadsheets of how we've collected different debris. We have all of the paperwork. When you give FEMA the paperwork, either you've met their criteria or you have not. It has nothing to do with who you send to ask the question.
Did you read the presentation? It's more than, a lot more than FEMA. So I just happened to bring that up. That's how the email came to us, but the presentation that they gave us and past experience, this is way bigger than that. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Well, I'm just screening through this, I see that there's a lot of people and they do a lot of stuff and they can... If they bring us back somehow or another more than 60,000, I guess I could get excited about it, but giving them 60 without something specific that we're asking them for aside from helping us process FEMA paperwork, I can't get excited about that if we can't also find $50,000 to buy land around Round Lake Park.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Being somebody that had to deal with FEMA from a utility standpoint and reimbursement and the amount of hoops you have to jump through, we've got a lot more than $60,000 riding on FEMA. And to me, to have somebody that's in DC that's working on this, that can navigate through this a lot better, I mean, I know we've got a very competent staff, but we need somebody that can really navigate through this to make sure that we get every last dime that we can, that we're entitled to from FEMA. It's real easy to miss something with FEMA. I mean, there's, you wouldn't believe the amount of, you know, from a utility standpoint, the amount of work orders and other things that we've had to put together and when things end and when things begin, or you don't get that FEMA reimbursement. And to have somebody there that can do that, just from a FEMA standpoint, is worth the $60,000. And then there are also, there's a lot of other stuff like Counselman Henkin said that they can provide us. I fully support this.
Thank you. Deputy mayor?
Well, I do remember the days of Hurricane Charlie, which was before my time here, but when I got here, two years later, we were still trying to get FEMA funding and nothing seemed to work. These fellows brought back much, much more than we gave them back then. If we fast forward to today, you've got the entire island of Puerto Rico is being rebuilt, St. Croix, Virgin Islands, Miami, Texas. It's a weird, real quagmire out there and I think it, we would be well-served if we had someone representing us, if not to expedite or clear up any questions they might have because I've seen reports that people that are, have claims with FEMA from Hurricane Sandy or Superstorm Sandy are still waiting. That was when? Three years ago? So, you know, if they can go and provide us a service and expedite this and not drag this out, I think it's money well spent.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cobb, has this been budgeted?
No, sir. We would have to find the funding.
Mr. Cobb, do you need us to approve the budget of it, or is this something under your authority if we have consensus?
It would depend on the final dollar figure as to whether or not it would be under my authority. And so we would have to, basically tonight, we just want to know if you want us to pursue it further.
Well, I'm pretty much in agreement with that, but I would like an agenda of items that we'd like them to work on, too. Specifically, and that's, I think, what Counselwoman Sladek is looking for, too.
And I kind of like to know what we would cut if we're going to do this immediately in this budget year, because we'd have to, we've got to find 60 grand.
Well, those are all questions that'll come back to us, correct?
Yes, sir. We would have to, we would have to ring a budget amendment to you.
Well, I will say that they have been extremely helpful over the years and when the budgets got very lean, obviously, they were the first ones to go. How much reimbursement are we looking at from FEMA right now, Mr. Cobb? How much do we spend? What do we got out there? About?
Let me have Mr. Booth come up and can give you a better...
Round numbers, Mr. Booth.
Round, excuse me, round numbers on debris right now are 1.3 million. We're still going through the assessment of what we can get reimbursed for, for emergency procedures. I don't know that number yet.[1783.82]
So it's in excess of 1.3 million?
Yes, sir.
How much?
1.3.
Okay. Okay, so if we brought them on even just through, through this process to ensure that we got the 1.3 back plus more, it could have some benefit to, to us. I mean, just in my mind, I'm speaking out loud, I'm not asking for an answer, but alrighty, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I forgot one thing. I do recall that when I was in DC once and met with them, and this was during the, the recession and the meltdown of a lot of companies, one of which was AIG, I believe, and they owned the water plant at the time.
That's right.
And I remember having a conversation with, with Skip saying, you know, if you could help us get that water plant. And they, I don't think they provided direct intervention, but they, they certainly provided their influence to help that, that water plant become available.
That is true. I have no doubt that it would be beneficial to us over the next year or two.
You know, just a couple of things to try to address Councilwoman's concerns. You know, having worked with these folks for, for a number of years and seeing success, I mean, like I said, directly or indirectly, I think they have brought over the years a couple of million dollars to the city when things were a little bit different in Washington, how they work. But let me just read you all, Councilwoman, if you, if you bear with me for a minute. It's not just FEMA. I like stuff when I see, and this is stuff that this firm has got for other cities, so Henry County, Florida, 904,000 in competitive grant funding for a cops fire program. That's, that's one. Then we look at 1.5 million, the city of Lorda, Lorda, Lorddale Lakes, Florida, 1.5 million to staff the fire and emergency responders. So, I mean, I just point out those two. Again, well, here's another one. Riviera Beach, 625,000 in federal grant funding for cop stuff. So this, for $5,000 a month, 1.3 million they owe us. All the other things they can do, you know, when we need a new fire truck, when we need new equipment, these guys, you know, in addition to the state, I mean, their, their track record is, is incredible and we know them. They, and they know us. This, this is, to me, is a no-brainer. I mean, yeah, what you do is you look at it after, after some time and if it's not working, you know, then, then we're, we're out of it. But these guys are, these guys are pros in lots of areas and the stuff that they do benefits the city in so many other ways. So, yeah, I, I think it's, it's really a no-brainer. You'll certainly get back way more than you would spend and, and we've seen it in the past. At least the three of us have seen it when it happened. The only reason they're not here is because of the recession. Otherwise, they'd still be here, you know?
That is true. So, Mr. Cobb, it seems like you have consensus to put together some items that we can possibly have them chase after, budget numbers for us and bring that back on January 17th for council consideration. Perhaps we can have a conversation with them and see what's up there that could, we could apply for that would benefit public safety. We are building a new public safety building. You know, maybe there's some grant funding that we're unaware of that they can help us with. You know, the road improvement dollars, that's gotten a little tough for them because everything kind of flows down here through the state. You know, there's no earmarks for that anymore, but, you know, there are lots of grants floating around out there that we may or may not know of. Oh, wastewater reclaimed.
Yeah, that's the one that I was noticing that doesn't seem to be tagged to FEMA. Most of the other stuff, it's like this through the FEMA program and this.
Right, yeah, the wastewater, I know they were, they were chasing something for us. Remember, it was like an Indian reservation grant or something? It was, actually, we've got Congress and Mike involved in it too, with, through Al Kady and Fay back then. Something with wastewater and sewer lines and it was actually like a Indian reservation hidden grant money that was out there and, right, we didn't, we didn't end up qualifying for it, but it was, it was something that was out there. But anyway, okay, bring that back to us, sounds like a plan. With that being said, anything else on Al Kady and Fay? Nope, hearing none? Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, since this is our last meeting in December, I'm sure everyone will have the holidays and the 12 Days of Christmas has started. I believe there's some other events this week. Also, we have a holiday parade in Snow Mountain on Saturday, which we're all looking forward to. And with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Great, anything else?
No, sir.
Alright, Mr. Groot, you're up.
Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Groot, we do appreciate that. Moving on, first one up is myself and, Mr. Cobb, you hit it, 12 Days of Christmas. The tree lighting is on Thursday, this Thursday, the 7th, starts at 6 o'clock and it's in conjunction this year with food trucks, music, Santa and reindeer.
And reindeer.
I heard something about reindeer.
I believe so, yes, sir.
So we're having a couple of Santas, reindeer.
And no, no bears?
No bears. Well, Mike Orlando's bringing those.
Okay.
We're good.
Well, if the reindeer attract them, I don't know.
Yeah, the reindeer will attract the bears. Then on the night, as Mr. Cobb mentioned, Snow Mountain and the Holiday Parade. Holiday Parade starts at 3:30, Snow Mountain VIP starts at 2 o'clock and then open to the public, I think it was 4, 4:30, something, 4 o'clock?
I believe it's 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock at Snow Mountain. Now, for those who were there last year when it was first moved over to the park, you know, the layout was a, a work in progress. This year, if you haven't seen the layout, the mountain is moved to the new road that opened up Restaurant Road. So it's got a little bit of a downhill going on it already and it's a higher, longer slide, I've been told.
Yes.
So it won't be out in the street, out in front of the amphitheater in the park like it was last year, so it'll open everything up. So it should be an exciting event for everyone. Santa Run starts on December 11th, Monday, Santa around town and the schedule for that is up on the website. And I would be completely remiss in not mentioning our favorite UCF Knights down the road, undefeated, unbelievable season. The game last Friday and this Saturday, my voice is still hoarse from the Saturday game and it was one heck of a season and I know it had everything to do with us flying the flag out in front of City Hall every week before the game. Is the flag still up? I haven't looked. Flag came down today? Well, don't, don't lose the flag, we got one more game, man. We are going to the Peach Bowl on January 1st, so, and I know that, I know it was bittersweet, Coach Frost left us, but hey, we enjoyed them while we had them and I am sure the athletic director, Danny White, will find somebody just as exciting to lead UCF fast into next year. With all that being said, Merry Christmas, everyone, and we will move on to Councilman Pollock's up.
I just wanted to give kudos to the Stork Society for the, the tree lighting.
Oh, we forgot.
At the Laughton House, that was, that was well done, great event every year. And then the Star Shines over there performing, that's, that's always good. My daughter performed in that last year. The, I had a few questions. Unfortunately, Bobby's not here tonight, but I had a couple of questions on Mitchell Hammock, the irrigation down the center. I went through there last night. A lot of the, a lot of the plants there seem to be more drought-resistant plants and that irrigation was all over the road everywhere. I don't know if there's, that's something that we can, we can look at fixing on Mitchell Hammock, right? It's all right in front of Oviedo on the Park area.
The, the new medians?
Yeah, the new medians.
Okay.
It was, I mean, it was going out onto the road more than it was going into the median. The, so last night, I also, I went over to Chipotle and I went to park and I noticed a lot of signs across from Chipotle that were restrictive signs for Marlowe's and Maple Street. I, I, I'm not sure, I mean, I know that they built that part of the parking lot, but I'm, I'm concerned that we're trying to make this all one big area, but yet, if you're going to Chipotle or Starbucks where, where there's not a lot of parking, now you can't park over into that other area and stuff like that. I don't know.
Because you should be riding your bike, you're closer than me.
I knew that was coming.
No, I, I'm, I'm concerned because I think the biggest concern I have is, is you start getting tow truck companies out there and you, you develop this, this predatory towing practice where, where they're going to start towing these, these vehicles and watching everybody and, and I don't think that's what we want Oviedo on the Park to become. So I don't know how to handle that. I mean, I, I do understand that.
Are those, are those city parking lots or are those owned by the development?
They're owned by the developers.
I'm not sure what we can do, but I, I agree with you.
But it's hard because if you, if you go over to Chipotle, the, the parking spaces that are actually on, you know, that you would consider on the Chipotle side are tagged for Marlowe's and Maple Street. And Maple Street is only open, I believe, till 2 o'clock. So it's mainly going to be for Marlowe's, but, and I understand that it's, it's going to be busy and, and they're going to need the parking spaces, but I think, I, I'm just afraid about the towing and, and what that brings to the city. So I, I don't know if that's something that can be discussed with the developers or some sort of an agreement is reached.
It doesn't say they're going to tow though, does it?
Yeah.
I hate, I hate, I agree with it because I hate it when, when I get a towed or a boot or.
I don't, I don't think it says they're going to tow though. I noticed that today because I bike there just about every day now and it just says, you know, for, it, it's a, I think it's a hospitality thing.
No, there's a, there's a.
There's a towing, you saw a towing?
There's a towing sign over there.
Okay, I didn't see that part.
Yes, yes. And then my last question, the, the new curbing that went in in the median, or the new median that went in where Lake Jessup is, where Lake Jessup's going in, that curb is very square going, going kind of around where, when you started approaching, I guess you're going eastbound and you're approaching Ale House. I thought that we were, we had some sort of a standard to keep those rounded for emergency vehicles if they needed to cross them and stuff like that.
I did notice that too, it's like a right angle.
Yeah, and it's very difficult because you're actually being pushed out and then pushed in. I could see where vehicles can, can very easily hit those, especially if they're wider vehicles, like trucks.
Not everybody drives. What are you driving, like a Ford F-550 or something?
It's a Ram. And then.
Whatever, I could park my car in, in your bed probably.
And the, is there a reason why the mass arm for, for the new intersection at Jessup that, I guess it's for the, the, the eastbound lanes comes all the way across the road to, to catch those? Were we not able to put a, a mass, the, the post in that other corner to, to catch the eastbound lanes?
Usually it deals with the width of the right of way and so if they, if they have restricted right of way, then they will try to use the larger arm to.
Okay.
Capture button lanes. But we can, I can ask, we can ask, see what, see what the engineers say.
Coming from like an OCD standpoint, that just looks weird coming all the way across from that other corner. But that's all I have. Oh, and Merry Christmas.
To answer your Chipotle question, you know, there's 30 spaces right across the street from Chipotle, right behind the Strand.
Oh, okay.
In public right of way too.
Behind a park place, park place. There's 30 spots, public spots right in there.
Okay.
Yeah, because the, the issue is, is that the lots that Chipotle and Starbucks are on are owned by a different developer, the lots that Marlowe's and.
Maple Street?
Maple Street are on. So that's, that's the issue, the challenge. Alrighty, Deputy, nope, Councilman Henkin, you're up.
Eddie, got it wrong, you just read.
Well, that's because when they made the agenda, you were still the deputy mayor.
There you go.
Did you move the sign yet?
The deputy mayor like.
Don't get rid of the shirts.
Barbara, did you move the sign over to him yet? I will take care of that so he sleeps good, will you? Just a couple of things.
I, I don't plan on dying, so I'm just going to let you all know that.
The, the.
I'll try.
Gentleman that came from talking about the bears, you know, he said something that, you know, we really need to get a little proactive before because they, they are coming to Oviedo and I hear more and more sightings of them. Haven't seen one yet, but I know, know somebody out in Livoke went out to put her garbage out, hmm, maybe last year, said the bear stood up, growled at her, you know? Chief, you remember that one? That was on your, that was on your block. So they're out there, but I, what I wanted to ask you is, can we just reach out to Republic and ask them if there's something that's not overly expensive, doesn't violate the contract, but like just let's get them starting to think about a can like he showed us. Is there anything we can do to retrofit or other ones? I mean, honestly, I think Chief Chudnow, you used to say it all the time, put your garbage out at 6:00 AM and we don't have any problems, but most people put them out at night when they're around, so we have options. But just, just get them to talk and see if there's any recommendations they have with the cans would be nice, nothing urgent.
Real quick, just a point on that. I, I had asked that question and I did get a response back. If, if staff could just send that out to the entire council on, on the cost and, and what Republic's response was on that?
Yeah, what we'd have to do is get the one that they were showing, the one they're working on.
Right.
Works with the armed trucks.
Yeah.
And then, you know, Republic bought us the cans we have, we'd have to get a grant from FWC to purchase the other cans. That, that's the problem with the county, that's why the county made it a voluntary.
I'm saying, there's nothing to retrofit the current can that would work, no?
Nothing that, nothing that they, FWC.
Alright, well, it's on the radar because I do agree. I mean, I hear more and more people, there's a bear in my backyard today, I'm hearing it more and more, you know? These guys are taking over, you know, or we're taking over them, you know?
Now they're taking over us, they're spreading out.
It's kind of, it's kind of strange. Just two things. So a gentleman came up and talked about public comments to the end and doesn't like it. Alright, so let's just get that off the table. Supposed to be on our agenda tonight, but it wasn't. So here's my thought process and we can leave it the way it is for now, that's fine, but I just noticed over the last year or so that there's been a lot of, you know, hot potato issues and when the public comments in the end, especially when there's 100 people in here, the most important thing to get done is the people's agenda. The county, they have it at the end, a lot of other cities do it. Let's leave it the way it is for now, but we have to monitor it. We, we, you know, Mr. Miller used to say, oh, city manager, we had here, we had so many experiences, he said, you know, the council, the audience is, is burnt after two hours. So let's, let's leave it the way it is unless you all have a burning desire to move it, but that was really my intent, so we can get through the agenda and then give the public all the time they need. And, you know, to counteract what you said, you know, you want to talk about things are on the agenda, you could see what transpires and then yell at us, so it works both ways. But for me, I, I, you know, I, I can leave it that way, but we have to get through the agenda. We can't, we can't have gridlock and, and have agenda. And then, you know, I'll, I'll take your other question that you talked about, cutting people off. Nobody ever gets cut off in this chamber, ever, except when issues arise as they arose that time. I mean, we have to stick and we have to, we have to show, we have to show the world that this is how Oviedo does it and we don't get the way we got a couple of weeks back. So let's just start fresh, it's 2018 and just move on and we'll, we'll leave things the way they are, but honestly, that's my intent, to just get us through the meeting, get everything done. But if you're all good, we'll leave them where they are unless you all have some thoughts? No? You're all good?
I'm, I'm good with the way they are right now.
Alright, let's just monitor and everybody just try to have some, you know, listen, the world's a messed up place, let's try to have some decorum and, you know, we're all neighbors and we'll try to have a good couple of years and we'll get stuff done. You know, my report's a little controversial tonight, but I am going to just say one more time, you know, we've heard people in this room that don't like things that we've heard tonight and I would just caution you all strongly when you approach those two real estate parcels, they show pending right now. And before we make a play for them, I think everybody else in this community needs to know they're back on the market and has a sale. So this is precisely the issue that gets people upset, makes them, you know, form conclusions and like I said, the profession is great, but just because somebody heard something doesn't mean we go take advantage of it. So for me, that's why I voted no on that. You know, I know you guys are in the business and you all hear things, but whatever, but for me, until that shows on the market and everybody else in the world has a chance for it, that, in my opinion, was wrong. So, but the, the direction was given, so we, we support it as a, as a group, so. But on to better things, Thursday night, we have our big Christmas tree lighting out at Oviedo on the Park and I'm kind of glad because I'm newly minted. Deputy Mayor is going to be the emcee because Mayor is, is tied up and Keith will do an amazing job. You know, many people don't realize, but Councilman Britton's been here for 11 years and he has done a magnificent job and he's been the deputy mayor before, so handing that over to Councilman Britton, we are all in good hands should the mayor die, as he said.
Wow, I'll buy you lunch tomorrow.
So.
Don't forget, it's, it's just like a rocket, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Five, four, three, two, one, three.
So good luck with that. Congratulations on that, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your election, City of Oviedo. Thank you so much. Hope you all have a great Christmas and we'll see you around town. You've got lots going on in December. All the best.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sladek is up.
This last week, I, I discovered a weird, I, I hope it's a fluky, accidental thing in our code, and that is that if you have a field, you are not allowed to let it return to a forested state in an actual sort of a way. So I wanted to approach you guys to see if you might be willing to accommodate something like a natural reforestation permit process to allow people within bounds, to allow vacant lots to naturally, without nursery cultivated plants, turn back into beautiful forests for as long as people may want to have them as such.
That, that item, I, that is a slippery slope. That, that to me just means you're going to allow your, your, your property to, to become overgrown. And, and there's a lot of, of other things that come about from overgrown property, rodents, snakes, other things like that. And, and the whole trying to define, trying to define what properties are available for that and what properties aren't, because if you're living next door to a, currently a moat filled and now all of a sudden the weeds start growing up, I mean, the, to me, I, I just, I can't get on board with that right now. It would, it would, it would have to be so specific that I think we just leave it the way it is.
You know, I live in one of those places and no one told me I couldn't grow trees. I got, I got 100 trees back there, but I will have to say that when it's wet, it's wet back there, but when it dries out, I wish someone could mow it because it's very, very dry and it's, it's only going to take one lightning bolt to set that whole field on fire. So it, it probably is a slippery slope. It's something, in my case, we can maintain it, but it's, it's probably not the right thing for everyone. We, we, I would think a case by case basis would be something we'd have to look at.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that permit process would be a better thing than just saying, well, yeah, it's allowed, because you would not, for example, want to allow a developer to come in and take a forest and flatten it. So we, we have a provision in our code that says you can't, before you're going to go vertical and build something, you can't just take a forest and clear it because you prefer a field. You have to have a purpose for it. But there's also nothing that allows a person to, you know, say you've got a rundown house and you buy that and you think, well, I'm going to knock it down and just kind of let it go back to nature, and it's already grown up around the house, it's been condemned. Even if you knock down the house and even if it was already growing stuff all around it, you're still required to go in, you know, not to, it's easiest to think about it, Matt Marriage Properties, all, all over the place, he's knocked down these little houses, and he has to go around and mow all these things that had a house never been built, never would have had been mowed.
That, that's the cost of owning property in an urban area. I mean, we're, we're an urban city, we're not, we're...
But then we're, then we get into the slippery slope of what counts as inappropriate grass. Looking at the roundabout, there are things at the roundabout that don't fit good.
I can say honestly, I'm not interested in that either, so it doesn't look like there's consensus.
Okay. Well, I think it's a bummer that people can't create a forest with a naturally sloping oak, but I gave it a shot. Then I had a few questions on the charter. When, when was the last time we reviewed the charter and is it due again? Because we, we keep getting off kilter and then we kind of like push it back because we were late, but there's a few things that came up in the last couple of months that I've been keeping a list of. One of them is, is the off-year elections. I'm a big proponent of the two-year term, but it costs the taxpayers about $12,000 and thank you to the city clerk for very quickly getting, getting that information back.
It actually usually costs us more than...
Yeah, usually it's more. We were able to get a discount, she was saying, because we got, got to be the guinea pigs for some new testing equipment and we got some kind of a bonus from the Rotary Club because they volunteered their time and we didn't have to pay pole workers. So the original quote, I think, was maybe 18, 19,000 or something. So if you look at the voter turnout of 3,500 in this off-year election, that's a really high cost per person to create an opportunity to vote that people didn't really take advantage of. So just planting the seed that maybe, I don't know if everybody being elected the same year is appropriate, or switching the terms, or revisiting that in some way, putting it out there because this is the only form, form where I can suggest it.
Can I, can I, can I address that? And I, I have to tell you, that's actually a really good point because having spent four months on the campaign trail, the common thing that I heard was, didn't we just vote for you? Or didn't you just run? And now next year, yourself, Councilman Pollock and Deputy Mayor Britton after running, we have an election every single year in Oviedo and, and honestly, it's quite ridiculous. So the charter review, what we've been doing with the charter is if we see something major that has to be addressed, we are not convening a panel because we've looked at it so much. As a matter of fact, you and I looked at that in 2004, remember that?
Yes, I do.
That was one of the...
And we fought against four-year terms.
And we, and we, yes, we did. And I think we were on different sides of that one, but honestly...
Oh, really? You, you were on the go-to floor?
Yeah.
I thought you were two-year.
Well, I, I will say this, this is what I think, after, after having the people knocking on doors and talking, what I would suggest we do, Brian, we don't need to appoint a charter review committee. We can set things, if there's one or two things, and just put them out. Mr. Groot, yes, sir?
That's correct.
Honestly, I would like to see us go to, to try, well, we have to ask the voters' approval to go to the four-year terms. So to align, the mayor and I would go on the presidential cycle and your three seats would go to the governor's cycle. So I can get on board with that all day because I just heard it all summer long. We can't have an election every year and it's also not fair, especially, you're a smart girl, he's a smart guy. We see now, after a year, you guys have got it. The first six months is hard and you're going to think about running again. So I would be totally in favor of sending that out to the voters in November to, to go to the four-year term, realign the mayor and I, and then you guys get four-year terms. That, well, that's if you guys want to stay here for four years, you know?
That's a big question. Two years is a big commitment.
I think, I think that would be a good, a good, good thing to do.
Well, here's another idea then. And looking at the charter today, we are not allowed to rotate the chairman. That would have been my first preference for, for how to do things. That violates the charter. But there's nothing that says we can't rotate seats. So for the short term, what do you guys think about rotating the seats around?
I'm sitting right here. I've been here 11 years.
All right, all right. And anybody excited about the idea of changing how long the chairman is there so we could potentially rotate the chairman? Because if nobody practices but the guy who's really good at it, nobody else will get good at it.
We've done it, I've done it.
Well, but...
Not very good, but I've done it.
But that's the thing.
It's a lot harder than...
I know it's hard and, and it's, it's a thankless job, which is why you got nominated because I was thinking, well, Henkin's got this...
Really?
Well, Councilmember Henkin has always said, you know, the deputy mayor changes every year. Well, you're just it. The charter says that whoever's the chairman is automatically deputy mayor if it's not the mayor. So it, so it couldn't be him, couldn't be you. And I was thinking, between these two guys...
Yeah, but let me just say, deputy mayor changes every year. That was my program.
I love that.
I wanted everybody to have it and I started rotating and I still believe in that thought. I think it's good that you have it, but I have to say, I've been, you know, I've been sitting here for a long time and I've seen other people run these meetings. You know, love him or hate him, he does a good job and when you sit there, it's kind of hard. Like I like to get all my thoughts, I like to watch the audience, hear what they have to say. It's not an easy thing to do.
Oh, I know. That's why I nominated him.
He'd be good.
Because I thought it'd be good and that Keith just wouldn't, wouldn't want to do it as much because he'd be gathering his thoughts. So anyway, that is kind of the, the reasoning behind that and it, it sounds like there's no consensus for a rotating thing, but...
Go back to the mayor is the chairman. That's what the chair...
Well, yeah, it seems like it's always, has it always, it's always been that ever since the mayor got a vote.
That's the way it was. It got changed in one of the charter reviews.
Oh, did it? Okay.
It used to be, it used to be the mayor was the chairman.
So you have two...
Just like it is in every other city.
So you have...
Well, that, that makes the most sense.
So you have two questions there. You know, you could, you could put that as a charter question, should it be changed to have the mayor preside over the meetings? And that could be a question. You know, the other thing that would be really good, and I think some people would like it, I wasn't always a fan of it, but you could, you could do those terms and you could have, you know, three-term limits, you know? I mean, that's all discussion, but, but nothing else, that is a, one, hey, we're agreeing.
Should, should we put this as a discussion item maybe? It sounds like it might merit more discussion.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Four-year terms, I mean, I've been an advocate of that since the very first time we put it on the ballot, but it's been out there three times and three times the voters have shouted them.
Yeah.
Actually, it came closest the time we put it out there with the three-term limits, which I think was the last time we put it out there. It was only shot down then by about, it was like 60, 40 or something.
You know, the question...
The very first time it got shot down like 88 to 12.
You know, the question gets asked a lot too. You know, like the mayor just pointed out, a couple of times we've asked, but it's never been worded correctly. I think that the, the citizens would be really mad when they're spending 20, 25,000 when it's all said and done on an off-year election that 14% of the people come out with, you know? It really should be when everybody's coming out, you know? I mean, I think the one time, I think it was you and Councilman Schenk ran and they were on the presidential cycle, you know, there was 17,000 people voted, you know, something like that.
The very, the very first time it got moved to November, we had Schenk and I and 17,000 something, Schenk got like 9,000 votes or something.
Do you want that as a discussion item?
I, I would, yes.
But not January 17. Push it, not January 17 because that's going to be a heck of a meeting as it is.
That was my first question.
Push it off to February.
February, okay.
Please.
I've got another hope for maybe bringing back as a discussion item in February, and that is revisiting whether it might be appropriate to have an optional historic district. And what brings this back to mind is a discussion with a businessperson who is trying to set up shop here in Oviedo, maybe a year, year and a half ago, in a historic property, and ended up being discouraged and she went to Winter Springs. She is looking to expand in the next couple of years. And I said, ah, you know, don't, don't write Oviedo off yet. If you really want to be in a historic property, maybe there's time to figure out a way for, for the flexibility to become available to actually rehab one of these historic places. So hoping we can maybe get that as a discussion item and...
Didn't we discuss that already, like the markers and like didn't we kill that like 20 times already?
Well, we were supposed to have something for rehabbing buildings and the time is right to, to consider it again, I think. No discussion.
Doesn't look like it.
All right. Well, I do want to make you guys aware that the Oviedo Preservation Project is planning to install about four historic markers through the state's program in conjunction with the county in the next year or so. We're talking with Drew Bullware about placing them in, in Boston Hill Park and they have to go right of ways, they're different criteria. But everything is, you know, fact-checked all the way up and down the chain and this will cost the city absolutely nothing to install them in the first place or to maintain them. They would be maintained by the county once installed. So I always love to see when taxpayers at the city level are not on the hook for anything and we get some non-proper participation. And last thing, there's art on the wall. So if you have not yet checked this out, the, most of these were made by people here in our city or, you know, employees at City Hall or family members of employees at City Hall. I think the, the picture up here of the face might be a relative. Yeah? Very cool.
Is that you? Your son's portrait of you.
Isn't that awesome? I love it.
I can see the likeness, looks great. Very Pablo Picasso.
Oh, yeah, the gingerbread houses. Councilman Pollock's reminding me that...
Oh, come on, let's get out of here.
Oh, I, I took my kids to see him. I'm on the hook now to build gingerbread houses that are very elaborate, so hats off to everybody who did that. Thank you.
All right, Keith.
Man, that's a tough one to follow. Well, I'll piggyback real briefly on the bears. My uncle Ted was a famous hunter and trapper up in Michigan and whenever I used to go with him, he would look at the poop and he could tell bear poop from moose poop from... And I'm here to tell you that when I go in my backyard, I see bear poop. And so they're here.
You're by the Econ though, right? They could just walk right up?
They can walk right up. And I've never seen one in my backyard, but I know they're out there.
They, they came through my backyard, knocked, went right through my PVC fence, just knocked the panels right out like it was nothing, got all the bird feeders, bent them all up and then just kept moving along. And you could see right where you came through, by the way the fence was pushed in.
Yeah, keep an eye on your pets and be vigilant and frankly, I think they're more afraid of us than we are them.